Please join me in prayers. Dear God, today as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our fathers, of our founders. May we be granted the state of wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing and all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Please join me in allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Here.
Counselor Gitchia.
Here.
Counselor Janess.
Here.
Counselor Leahy.
Here.
Counselor Mercier.
Here.
Counselor Noon.
Here.
Counselor Robinson.
Counselor Ruck.
Here.
Counselor Scott.
Here.
Counselor Yem.
Here.
Mayor Chow.
Here.
And President.
Any moment of silence, any memorial tonight? Hearing none. I'd like to welcome everyone in the chamber here to tonight's meeting and welcome everyone who is watching us from home as well. We'll start the meeting with the mayor's business on 2.1 as a communication remote Zoom participation. Motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Yem, second by Counselor Scott, on favor of the I, opposing note, I have it. Motion is carried. We have exciting news and presentation today. I believe we have a member of the Massachusetts Pirates, Mr. Jawad Yatim, here today to make a presentation. Mr. Yatim, please welcome. As you know, Lowell is very excited to have the sports team to come play in our city. And I'd like to ask you to make an introduction of the Pirates to us, please.
Yeah. Oh, well, thank you very much for the introduction. I appreciate it. My first time here, my first time doing this, you know, but it's been an absolute treat, you know, so far. You know, the city's been so receptive, the arena's been extremely receptive, the university's been extremely receptive, and, you know, we're certainly glad to be here. You know, we're relocating from the city of Worcester, and, you know, we want to represent the Bay State, you know, the state of Massachusetts right here in Lowell. And, you know, we plan on doing that, plan on doing that well. And, yeah, so we're a little bit about ourselves. You know, obviously, we're called the Massachusetts Pirates. You know, we're in our sixth year of existence, going into our sixth season. You know, we currently have a television deal with Nessun. We've never missed the playoffs, we've already won a championship. The majority of our players come from major Division One universities, guys who've been to the NFL, who've gone cut, who are trying to get back. You know, we provide the opportunity for them to get filmed, stay active, and give themselves an opportunity to be evaluated and move on up to the level that they want to go to. You know, we've had, you know, countless, you know, guys that have gotten picked up, a couple guys on the Atlanta Falcons right now, a guy who worked out for the Baltimore Ravens this past summer. You know, we just signed TCU's all-time leading passer as our quarterback. You know, we had a projected third-round pick, you know, from last year as our running back right now from the University of Utah. So, you know, I say that to say this, that, you know, it'll be an entertaining product that comes to this city, you know, hopefully something that drives, you know, families and kids, you know, to the arena and just provide them something to do. Are we going to change the world? No. You know, but at the end of the day, you know, we're a very affordable product for the city, for the people here, and, you know, it just gives them something to do over the spring and summer months, you know, once, you know, the hockey season and the basketball season is over. So, you know, we're absolutely thrilled to be here. You know, can't thank, you know, everybody here enough for, you know, like I said, the receptiveness and their attention. And, you know, obviously, you know, just getting here and just acquainting ourselves with the community, we are looking to get involved, you know, in any way that we can. You know, any kind of donation opportunities, any kind of volunteer opportunities, you know, any kind of opportunity to make an impact on the community, you know, we're looking to do so. You know, all our information is right on our website, www.masspiritsfootball.com. You know, you can always email us at thecontact@masspiritsfootball.com for any general inquiries and, you know, from there, you know, we'll do everything we can to be productive members of the community, and that's certainly our primary goal. You know, the players get here in late February, you know, for training camp. Opening night is March 17th out in Green Bay, and then the first ever arena football game in the city of Lowell is March 23rd against Jacksonville at the Songas Center. You know, we hope to have everyone out there, you know, and put on a show for everybody and represent the city, you know, in the best way that we can. And, you know, plan on coming out and seeing a lot of wins. You know, we haven't lost a game in Massachusetts since 2022, so, you know, we look forward to continuing that here in the great city of Lowell. So, you know, thank you, everyone, for their time, you know, much appreciated. Go Pirates and go Lowell. Thanks.
Absolutely. Any counsel who'd like to make a comment? Counselor Ruck?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'd like to thank Jawad as well for coming out and coming to Lowell, Mass. You know, to his point about being involved in the community, you know, just last night we had our wrap-up dinner for our Lowell junior high football. You have 130 kids who were in attendance, and the Pirates were there with the mascot and cheerleaders, and, you know, they had a wheel that, you know, giving away items and things for the kids. So, already making an impact on youth in the city, you know, and them coming here just adds to the enticement of the city of Lowell and wishing the best of luck. And, you know, I'm sure as a council, as a city, what we can do to make them successful only benefits everybody. So, once again, thank you very much for coming to Lowell and wish you the best of luck.
Thank you. Thank you, really. I appreciate that, honestly. It's, you know, we're, we need the city, you know, behind us, and, you know, the support from the city is everything for us. And, yeah, so, thank you. Thank you very much. Anything we can do, honestly.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Again, thank you for being here, and we're looking forward to the first game.
I appreciate it. We look forward to having you now. All right? Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Counselor, you all set? No other comments or questions? Counselor Gitchia.
Mr. Mayor, could I make a motion to suspend the rules to allow Larry Flynn from Coats from Anabou to speak?
Absolutely. We'll just accept the motion to accept, place on file on this presentation. Motion by Counselor Leahy, second by Counselor Mercier on favor of the I, opposing note, I have it. Motion is carried. Motion by Counselor Gitchia to help Larry Flynn to make presentations on the Coats program have a success, second by Counselor Mercier. Mr. Flynn, please.
Thank you. Good evening. Evening, Tip. First of all, Happy Thanksgiving, but we had our winter coat giveaway for the fire department local 853, the nonprofit Coats from Anabou, on the 11th. On the morning of the 11th, 40 people were already standing outside. We gave away somewhere around 200 to 250 winter coats. But at 10 minutes of 9:00, a woman came down to the firehouse and asked if her brother could move to the front of the line because he had a dialysis appointment at 9:30. So, I just want you to know that kindness and humanity are alive in Lowell, because I went out to the crowd, and everyone in the line said, "Yeah, go ahead, move right up to the front." So, just because people are down on their luck, they still have a heart, you know, and they feel for someone who's struggling worse than they are. So, we had a great year. We bought over 350 brand-new coats for kids in the Lowell schools, and all of them have been delivered except for one school. They're going to be delivered tomorrow. And 50 kids from Lowell High School who are homeless got brand-new coats from REI. This is our second year with REI. Last year, they gave us a discount of 30% off, and this year, they matched it. So, unfortunately, we left someone else. I don't want to mention the name, but they cut our discount, and I tried to explain to them that these are for homeless kids, you know? You can't make a special discount. No, we can't help you. So, unfortunately, they lost in REI. We go to the Reading store, and they wanted me to go to corporate, and I said, "No, there's too much red tape." And I said, "Something might happen in the winter. We need a bunch of coats. I want to be able to come here and say, 'Hey, what can you do for us?'" And so, they've been great. So, thank you for your time, and hopefully it'll keep on going. Happy Thanksgiving.
No, any comments or questions on this? Counselor Leahy?
Again, I just, you know, from myself and probably everybody in the city, we just want to thank Larry for his continued work on this. When you volunteer, when you do these types of programs, it's not easy. It's a lot of labor, it's a labor of love, and it takes a lot of time, and the years go by, and before you know it, you've been doing it for, you know, years and years. So, we want to thank you and all your volunteers that come up to help you wherever you went. There you go. But, thank you very much, and I'm glad you're not a shy guy, so you can make these companies give you the best discount you can. So, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing no other comments, I just want to say thank you also, Larry, for all you do and amazing work you do, the whole organization, that's right, what a team player. And then motion to accept, place on file by Counselor Gitchia, second by Counselor Janess on favor of the I, opposing note, I have it. Motion is carried. The next line item is the city clerk, the minutes of the city council meeting, November 14th, for acceptance. Motion accept by Counselor Noon, second by Counselor Leahy, on favor of the I, opposing note, I have it. Motion is carried. We are now at the city council motions. We'll start out with 4.1. This is a motion by Counselor Yem, request city manager have the proper department reach out to the railroad company to secure and clean up debris along the railroad tracks running throughout the city, second by Counselor Scott. Any comments or questions? Counselor Yem?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much. The resident at the Western Ave Studio and then along Wilder Street reached out to me for the past two years, have asked me to do something to have the railroad company secure some of the fences that is not, that is broken, and number two, a lot of illegal dumps along the tracks, so asking the city to reach out to the railroad company to be sure to clean it up, things like that. So, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments or questions on this? Hearing none, on favor of the I, opposing note, I have it. Motion is carried. The next motion is also by Counselor Yem, request city manager have the proper department create and adopt a veteran program, second by Counselor Mercier. Counselor Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is one additional program that I'd like to introduce, similar to other cities in town, particularly that has this program. Adopted a veteran, meaning that if I would like to adopt a veteran, I would buy these, it's a flag holders that would then, then will put a flag and a flag holder, and then it put it on to the graveyard for the veteran that I adopted. So, this way, this way, I can honor a veteran or a family members who wants to do that. This flag holder online, it costs about $20, and then we, I would like to see that the veteran affair would have this program, put it on the website, and resident families and members who want to honor their loved one can then fill out application. The application, then the veterans office will then, you know, order this on their behalf to place it at the graveyard of the veteran that they want to honor. Mr. Lamarche cautioned me that, you know, that we have issue with the theft and all of that, but I understand. But if I would like to honor some veterans, I would spend the money, and it doesn't matter, and if someone steal it, that's okay, as long as the first time I'm able to put it at the graveyard of the veteran that I'd like to sponsor. The aluminum flag holder was started around the Veterans Day, and then will stay all the way to November year-round. So, this is one way that I'd like to introduce, and Mr. Lamarche and I will have a discussion and create the program, and maybe have a form online, similar to other cities, they have it, so someone from the veterans' family and friends would like to sponsor, they fill out a form, they pay a minimal fee. Other cities in town charge $40, and then I think we can talk about, maybe for hardship, we can waive it, all of that. So, I appreciate the support from all my colleagues and the administration. Thank you so much.
Any other comments or questions on these motions? Hearing none, on favor of the I, opposing note, I have it. Motion is carried. The next motion is by Counselor Mercier, request city manager have treasurer report as to how many constables we have in the city, how much revenue is collected a year for services from them as civil process servers, and if the city is rightfully getting 25% share, and who is overseeing the duty to make sure it is happening, second by Counselor Noon. Counselor Mercier?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Constables are appointed under Section 91, 91A and 91B, are otherwise elected to serve as constables in a city or town, and they shall periodically pay the town or the city in which the constable is appointed or elected 25% of all fees the constable collects for the service of civil process under the fee structure established in Section 8 of Chapter 262. This payment shall be made in installments to be deposited with the city or town treasurer not later than January 15th, April 15th, July 15th, and October 15th of each year. I believe the money goes into what's called the general fund. How many constables do we have in Lowell? I'm not saying that I'm presenting this because they're not paying. I have my suspicions. Perhaps we're not getting our fair share, but I don't know that until someone checks in to verify what I think. I just want to see. How many constables do we have in Lowell? Who in this city treasurer's office is overseeing these funds? Could we check with other communities and see what their status is as far as constables and their fees that they're generating? The bottom line is, I'm concerned, are we getting our fair share? So, I'm asking through this motion for a full report as to this particular issue. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on these motions? Hearing none, on favor of the I, opposing note, I have it. Motion is carried. The next motion is also by Counselor Mercier, to request city manager have proper department clean tree brush area around the Polish monument in front of city hall. The tree brush is obscuring and compromising the condition of the monument, second by Counselor Drinkwater. Counselor Mercier?
Yes, thank you. Motion completed. That's pretty quick, isn't it? Thank you so much.
So, you are withdrawn?
Thanks, Sean.
Yeah, excellent. So, this motion has been withdrawn, acceptable by the second Counselor Drinkwater. Now, the next motion is a joint motion by Counselor Leahy and Counselor Noon, request city manager explore the feasibility of payments to retirees who work for the city during the COVID period. Who would like to go first? Okay, I think you've been volunteering, Counselor Noon?
No, Counselor Leahy.
Okay, he volunteered you back, Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. So, we all have--
You speak.
We all have a letter from the chairman for the retirement board, as well as Mr. Robert Littlefield, concerning this motion. The letter simply urged the administrations, maybe the council, to reconsider the recent retiree for eligibility for a premium pay. I know that they have been denied it. I know that during the COVID, before their retirement, they just recently retired, before their retirement, they work during those period. So, they asked us to ask the administrations to reconsider that denial, maybe make them eligible, so that leave it up to the administration to do so. Thank you.
Any other comments? Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. No, that's it in a nutshell. So, if we could take another look at this, they'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, on favor of the I, opposing note, I have it. Motion is carried. The next motion is by Counselor Noon, request city manager, DEI officer conduct membership analysis on boards and commissions to see gaps in terms of representation, second by Counselor Scott. Counselor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I'll wait for the report to come back and to comment on it. I know that a number of people in the community would like to also speak on these issues as well when the report come back.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, on favor of the I, opposing note, I have it. Motion is carried. The next motion, 4.7, Counselor Noon, request city manager, DEI officer provide an up-to-date posting on boards and commissions vacancies, second by Counselor Ruck. Counselor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The administration have done a very good job in terms of filling the position vacancies and also sending a letter to those resigned from the positions, thank you letters. So, we just want a continued update on these matters, and I'm sure that maybe when the report come back, we may have some comment on it. Thank you.
No other comments or questions? On favor of the I, opposing note, I have it. Motion is carried. The next motion is by Counselor Gitchia, request city manager update the city council on the citywide sidewalk index rating study, second by Counselor Janess. Counselor Gitchia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Through you to Manager Golden. Manager Golden, we asked for this study from the city engineer well over a year and a half ago. Engineering services are exempt from procurement. There should have been no reason why we don't have this. And every time we go to a neighborhood committee meeting, this is the first question that comes up. How do we pick sidewalks? How does this happen? Why isn't ours being done? And we're at an unfair advantage to the residents in saying, you know, where do their sidewalks actually fit in this process, much like the streets? And I think it's unfair that it takes this long for something like this to be done, but I do understand that, you know, that there's a workload that's over there. But Counselor Scott was at the meeting, Counselor Janess was at one meeting, the Highlands meetings have the same thing as the back centrals, as Senaval has had, and we're seeing trees uplift some of the sidewalks, and they want to know exactly, you know, where are we in this process? And we really, truly don't have answers, and I think we all projected this was going to be questions a year and a half ago coming to this council. And if we can somehow make this happen sooner so that we can actually have this, and then put that rating study online so people can actually see how bad is their sidewalk and where does it fit within the city's capital planning going forward? Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council. Counselor, we do have this moving forward as well as with the road, the update on the roadway project rating study. So, this is something that we do have every intention of putting on the website to make sure that everybody knows exactly where it is. We're going to make that, we've already made the decision to put the RSR out there, and we will be putting RSR back out on roads as well coming, this coming year, because we're at the end of the three-year cycle. So, what people are going to see, that will be updated again. But as far as sidewalks, that will be coming out as well. This is something we have been working on to make sure that everyone is going to know where they are on the index, and then if people have a concern with it, we're going to have to go down the road, go down the road, I guess, and have that discussion. But we will be relying on the third-party validators on this.
And as I said in the past to you, once this studies together, you know, again, if a road in the Highlands rates worse in sort of Senaval, you would lump them together and try to take care of more roads in Senaval, so you're doing it all within a square area because that actually drops the bids down if you can do all the work in the same area, rather than the way we've been doing it all along with just cubic yard bids. And, you know, that's not the way to bid in today's government. And is there a timeframe on when you expect to see this back from engineering? That it goes out, that we hire someone and they start these studies?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council. We're hoping to have that actually online in the first part of January. But just caution this, that we will be looking for an updated version because we are at the end of the three-year lifecycle on this.
Okay.
So, what we do have currently right now, we will be putting forward, I'm hoping, by the end of January.
I think we're confusing two things. We currently have the RSR for the roads, not sidewalks. They have never been done. So, I'm just talking about the sidewalk.
That's correct.
When can that be? I don't think they've even done a study yet. Has engineering done the study yet?
We're hoping to have it done by the end of January.
And online that quick? Okay. Hope it don't slow.
I'm hoping, Counselor, we're hoping to get that done by January.
Any other comments or questions? Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. This would be great because, again, people are waiting to get their sidewalks done and repaired. If I can just go a little over to the roads, Mr. Manager, just to ask, I know in the city we have a moratorium where you don't dig up the roads after, say, November or whatever, but could we just check to see if there's any flexibility so that if National Grid could have a team out here, we could start replacing pipes throughout the winter? Just a question. You don't have to answer it now, but it'd just, it'd be good if we could get a jump on the gas pipes, then the roads would get paved. good if we could get a jump on the gas pipes, then the roads would get paved that much faster, you know, so.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Councillor, we did start, quite honestly, there hasn't been a lot of communication back and forth between National Grid and the city, but we have started that. And some of, so the residents at home understand it is difficult sometimes. There are a lot of roads, and you can pick any part of the city you wish. If National Grid has a cast iron or even coated steel, they're going to be looking to get into that road in the next year or two. It's very difficult for us to say, to do any type of treatment on that road, given the fact that they're going to be ripping it up. So we are trying to work a lot closer because, quite frankly, there hasn't been a lot of discussion. But through DPW, through the commissioner's office as well as the engineer's office, we're trying to have further discussions, which we're bringing everybody from water, wastewater, as well as National Grid, to see what issues we would have. I can tell you, on Dummer Street, the first month I was here, we finished Dummer Street, and unfortunately, we had a break that was there in that July. So there's a lot more discussion with the underground utilities, including our own, to get that done. And that's something that has been a work in progress, and I would hope that we're going to start to see the results of that. Now, however, that will still, once we really start to post all of this, you know, people may have concerns with a particular street and saying, my street needs to be done immediately. But it will have, whether it be a street or a sidewalk, you know, we have some challenges ahead of us. Due to the fact we've been spending anywhere from $1 million five to $3 million on our roadway projects, and that's including, that's inclusive of our sidewalks, this council and the administration has moved forward, obviously. By the end of this year, I think we're looking at close to $10 million. Next year, we're looking at another $12 million. So, you know, given the fact of this council, this administration, we are, in some aspects, going three, four, or fivefold with what we have been spending in the years past. And we're hoping that that is going to start to, people are going to start to see the proof that, of where we're spending this money. And sorry, councillor, just, and there's another caution, cautionary tale here. Over on the Christian Hill area in Seneville, we also have what's going on with wastewater. So there's a lot of streets over there that, quite frankly, with the sore, the separate, the sore relief separation--
CSO.
The CSOs, the combined sore, combined sore overflows, there's going to be a lot of concerns over in that area because we may not actually be doing a lot of work over there because of the CSO projects that we will be doing over on the Humphreys, Humphreys Brook coming all the way down. So there's a lot to be done, there's a lot to be had, but this council and obviously the administration has seen the importance in this, and we're starting to really invest in what we, what you would call as horizontal construction.
Okay. Now, that's good news. And again, a lot of work over in Seneville and with the dog park maybe. So we'll see. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I have a comment on that one. I think you got a report for the sidewalks.
Okay, I'm sorry to interrupt you. It's not open to the public yet on this one.
No.
That's okay. Any other comments or questions from any of the councillors? I'm sorry. Right. No other comments or question on this one? On the favor of the eye, opposed, no, eyes have it. Motion is carried. The next motion is by councillor Gisias, 4.9, request city manager, update city council on the water bottle fill stations at the Riley School, second by councillor Janess. Councillor Gisia?
Through you to manager Golden. Again, we've discussed this on the phone. The water bottle fill stations were purchased well over a year ago. They're sitting in a trailer, and we're trying to get them installed. And is there a way that maybe if our staff can't do this, then we move to some other source? Maybe we have students do it, maybe we have some other source come in and try to get these things in. But they're going to be obsolete by the time they come out of the trailer. And, you know, they're not in a condition in a trailer that's going to actually keep them functioning for a very long period of time. So if you could give us just a report on the progress on trying to get these installed, that would be great.
Councillor Yam?
If I may expand, that not just the Riley School at all, the school that has the water fill, bottle fill station to also take care of that as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is that councillor Yam said a request to make of the motion to amend and to include all the schools? A friendly--
It's up to the make of the motion, but I'm just kind of make a comment of that. So up to the make of the motion. If you want, councillor, could she want--
Make of the motion--
I guess my question before, I'm okay with that, is to the manager, we already have the bottle, do we have bottle fill stations already purchased for all the schools, or do we just have them already purchased for the Riley School? I was told just the Riley.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. It's my understanding that the, the school department purchased everything for all of the schools, and that happened quite some time ago, two years ago plus. That is something that, it's my understanding that is, that it, they do have all of those available.
Okay, so yeah, I would agree with councillor Yam in that. I was told the Riley School. Thank you.
So you would accept the friendly amendment?
Yep.
Who's second? That's okay by the person who seconded that? Who seconded by somebody? Mr. Clerk?
No, seconded yet.
Well, I thought, we are seconded by councillor Janess, and he said it's okay. On the favor of the eye, opposed, say no, eyes have it. Motion is carried. The last motion of the evening, we go through this pretty well. It's like going through like water, right? 4.10, councillor Gisia, request city manager provide the city council with an update on the conditions of the Patucket Memorial School, second by councillor Rook. Councillor Gisia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. So on Friday, I took a tour of the Patucket Memorial School, and it always amazes me at what you see when you go into certain buildings because parents reach out to you and they say that the conditions of the school don't meet the learning environment. And I would have to agree after going to the school. We have unit vents on the windows that go to the outside that control heat in the building, and they haven't been working for many years. The dampers have broke on them. So in order to control a building's temperature, those would have to work. And thermostats don't control the unit vents, so they're not working either. But we spent all this money doing remediation over there, but we're not controlling the heat inside the building. So the building in the summertime goes from 60 degrees at night because it cools off to 95 in the interim during the day, and then back to 60. So if you took a piece of metal and you put it in your refrigerator, and then you took it out and put a hairdryer to it, it's going to sweat, or anything for that fact. And when you look at all of the HVAC systems, that's where we should have spent our money in fixing those. The dampers are rusted underneath them. You can clearly see that when you go look at it. And wise money would be spent, and we shouldn't wait till December 7th when we're trying to have a joint meeting. Unit vents, ventilation systems, they actually bring in fresh air from the outside. At the same time, it's turning that into heat and into air conditioning, and they're controlled by thermostats that would run it, not teachers going over saying, hey, I'm cold, let's flick this on. And then when they leave at night, it's either on or it's off. So that building now isn't controlled in an environment that can stop a building from perspirating or growing mold. And when you look at the ceilings, I walked it with the principal of the school. He was told that the ceiling was metal, and it was a structured ceiling. Well, it's a drop ceiling in there that's made of metal, and I haven't seen one yet. But I think if that's the case, then we better send an engineer over there to look at it. But when we're cleaning these things and we're looking at it, the very first thing is we have to control the environment. OSHA will tell you that an environment in a school has to sit in a range. Normally, buildings don't change temperatures more than 10 degrees, whether it's at nighttime or it's during the day. And it's usually controlled by a system that says, okay, at nighttime, we shut down and we go down to 62. During the day, it goes up to 72, and it runs that way. But when you don't have any control over the environment and bring fresh air in, it's not conducive to anything, never mind the students, but it's not conducive to the building. So what I would ask the managers, long before December 7th, we send somebody over to look at all of those unit vents and get them up and running, whether, in my opinion, most of them need to be replaced. They've been, and this isn't under manager Golden's issue, this has been a long-term maintenance issue that has been a disaster over there. And even the rooftop unit, when you go over to the, where they eat in the cafeteria, a custodian has to go in a closet to flip the thing on to make it work. That's crazy. So you look over, some kid's cold. Okay, let me flip this on. And at nighttime, nothing goes on, so it doesn't turn over the air and air quality in the rooms. You have a principal who has to get there early in the morning to set fans into classroom doors to bring heat out of a room into a hallway, where if the room's cold, he dumps a fan in the hallway to bring the heat into the classroom. I don't even think in 1950 we did that. And we have ways of making this work. There is no reason why any parent, any school committee, or even a city council should be talking about these things. We should have qualified people in our city who are doing these things. And if we don't, we need to remove them and put people in who are actually going to do these jobs. And I know we've had a high turnover in that department, but it's long prior to that. And we have people in here who should have put recommendations to you long ago, and these units have already should have been ordered, and they should be ready to go in those classrooms long ago. It should never hit a newspaper. It should never hit these things. This is awful for that environment, and it's awful for the building. We don't need a new building. We need new personnel. And it's just sad that it reaches to this stage that, you know, a ceiling fan alone, if you go over there and you put a ceiling fan in, it will stop perspiration on the ceiling. Put a ceiling fan in, flip it on at the end of the night, and it will move the air. But you have dead space between the suspended metal ceiling in the roof of the building. Now, it's a crawl space that heats up because we're not preventing anything from protecting that. Those are the first things we need to do before we look at anything else. And removing the mold, you're just going to keep doing it over and over again until you can control the environment within that building, and that's what's going to happen. And the first place that mold will build when you change temperatures is the easiest place, and it's metals. So you're going to see that. That's why those dampers are rotted, and that's why the ceiling has mold. And if you just go in that building and take a tour, and I wish that this whole council would walk through that building on next week. I think Monday of next week, we all should make an appointment and walk over there and walk through that building and look at the conditions when you watch those kids. It's sad.
Councillor Musia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was at length discussion between the school committee on this issue, and they suggested, I should say, Stacey Thompson, I believe, made the motion, and she said that she would like to gather the city council and the school committee. And I think the city clerk did a call or an email. So that's going to take place. And is it December 7th or sometime 6:30?
Mr. Clerk, I think once finalized by--
Did we finalize it?
Once finalized, Mr. Clerk went form on the final date. Mr. Clerk hasn't finalized yet?
I have no responsibility of organizing what the date is. I sent the information over there, and when the school department has a date that they're set on, I assume they're going to inform me, and I can inform you.
Oh, we don't have the date yet? I thought it was December 7th.
It was a date that was put out there as a suggestion through the superintendent's office.
But it's not finalized yet.
Not to my knowledge.
But it is in the works that we're trying to get together and go over to that school, right?
That's correct.
Okay, fine.
Councillor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to clarify, was that supposed to be a joint facility subcommittee meeting that was going to be called? I thought that's what was--
Well, it's a joint, two full bodies, the school committee members and the entire council members who are able to attend, basically.
Okay, that's what was requested by the subcommittee. Okay, I thought it was a joint facility subcommittee. Just one question I have about the work order system. Are we really far past due on the work order system? Are they still, back when I was on the school committee, they provided quarterly reports to the facility subcommittee that showed, you know, all of the open work orders that we could go through and make sure that it was, you know, being addressed? And I don't know if that's still happening or not?
Yeah, Mr. Manager's been waiting to address all the council's common questions as well. Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Councillor, we had discussed the work orders, and that is a good idea. I'll make sure, we will get back to you in regards to where are we with the work orders. But I do want to let everybody know that I've been talking to the superintendent Skinner, and the collaboration's been great. This has been an ongoing problem, an ongoing issue, I would say for years, at this particular, this particular school. Through our public health and Ms. Golden, she had contacted the Bureau of Climate and Environmental Health just to make sure that we are in the process of making, to ensure that it is healthy and things are going well. I know that everybody knows this. We had two tests because every one of the councillors, and I thank you all for calling on this matter, because I know how important this is. But one test was an issue. The second test came back, the second test reading came back, and it was okay. That not being enough, we're going to dig down on another air quality test. But also, it's important for everyone to know that the building's mechanics, the controls, and those improvements, some of those are taking place, and some of the controls are still waiting to be updated because we're waiting for them to be received. Now, this is stuff that I've learned, but kind of remembered from a little bit, where some of this stuff is still stuck in yesterday's computer systems, if you would, and we are updating that. We've had plenty of troublesome mechanical components on site. They have been identified, and they're being repaired, or we're waiting for them to repaired. So it's not as if there's nothing happening here, but there is a lot to unpack in this particular school, which I think that the school department with the superintendent, as well as our DPW, our commissioner, we've been trying to unpack this. Are there problems there? There's no question about it. But we do want to make sure that the air quality testing is going to continue to take place, that everything is okay. But so to be clear, there was one test that was not favorable, but then when it was retested, it became, it was favorable. So I don't know if you have a false negative or a false positive there. We're bringing in a third, a third-party as well, an independent third-party vendor to compete, to complete a forensic investigation on all of this. So everything that councillor was talking about, I think that this is going to be uncovered within the coming weeks. So this, these are issues that, as many of the councils have been here, know about this. This has been something apparently has been going on for quite some time, but it's really time to rip the Band-Aid off, if you will, and get to the solutions to solve this problem. So that, I can tell you, that is indeed happening.
Councillor Scott, are you all set?
I just one more question. As far as the roof goes, where are we in applying for the roof to be replaced at this point in time? Is that with the MSBA like right now? Is it--
Mr. Manager?
Sorry, councillor, I didn't hear your question.
The roof replacement.
The roof replacement. I'll check, we'll have to check with the MSBA to see what the timeframe is on that, on the expedited spending.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Gisia?
Mr. Mayor, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the manager. Mr. Manager, what exactly did they test for?
Mr. Manager?
Councillor, I would gladly share this with you. There are probably about 17 items, maybe 20, 20 items here.
So is it air quality?
Yes.
So they did air quality and looking for mold?
That is, I might have to lean on Ms. Golden. Be better if I could see it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, manager, council. Which testing are we talking about? The one that was done by the school department? Or are we talking about the one that's going to be done by the state?
The one that was already completed.
The one that was completed by the state. That one was just testing for fungi and mold.
Okay. So it doesn't, it doesn't tell you anything about air quality in the room, just fungi and mold?
It's just testing fungi and mold and what is in the air. So when the initial test was done, it could have been a false positive if something was sprayed in the air, or if something was in the air prior to them coming in. And there was no interpretation in it. It was just a, it was just like the lab report was all that we got.
So to prevent any of that even being tested or even getting to that stage, those ventilation systems have to work. They pull in fresh air into rooms. When they're all shut down, you can do mold and that sport test. But when it comes down to air quality and moving of air, that's the question that's creating these issues. So why not just go after the capital planning and remove all of these heating units and put ones in that work that are actually controlled? That's, so we don't even have to get to this stage. That's what we're talking about. When you go in there, you look, the dampers are rusted. You open up one, all of the electricals ripped out of the thing. These have not worked in years. It's not weeks, it's years. And we had this problem with our HVAC department, which I applaud manager Golden for the change in that department, and it does take time. But it makes absolutely zero sense for this council or this city--
council or this city not to replace the units in their entirety. Because when you look at them, you're just replacing a part with something that hasn't worked for a long time, was never maintained. And they're like $15,000 each one, and there's probably 20 of those. And then when you look at the roof, so there's two separate units in there. There's a rooftop unit that's blowing through ductwork, and the other ones are units that are fixed to the exterior walls, which bring in fresh air there and turn them over. So almost every one of the exterior wall either was not working, or the control systems for all of the controls were not working. So none of the thermostats were working. So a teacher has to get up and do that. And the saddest part in this city is that a superintendent of schools who we hire to do schoolwork has to now look at heating issues in buildings. We're paying whatever, 200, over $200,000 for a superintendent of schools to look at heating issues every day. Does that make any sense in this city? And that's the way I'm looking at this, and I couldn't believe it when I had to listen to a principal who came from an outside school system and really wants to make a difference in the city of Lowell, sit there and throw his hands up in the air and go, "I don't know what to tell you." For the years that I've been here, we don't get response. We get nothing. 17 politicians going on a tour to look at things they have no idea about, does nobody justice except it's a good photo op? And it says, "We all agree, we don't know, but fix it, Mr. Manager." I mean, it's just insane to me that people can't see, there's a unit on a wall, it doesn't work. Okay, what do we need to do? It's over 25 years old, let's think about this. Let's remove it, and we don't need to call in people and waste more money. We wasted $350,000, I was told, on a cleanup that could have been prevented if we just had the HVAC systems working right. And now we're going to waste again on testing because we still can't figure out, okay, let me help everybody out in the room. Replace the units. Get the air quality back. Control the environment in the building, and it won't sweat the way it does, and mold won't build. You know that from being a health director. You understand temperatures. In the summer, there's no one in the building, it flips on, it's 95 degrees at the top, come nighttime, it's 60. That's a 30-degree turnover. What do you think the roof's going to do? Concrete, metal, whatever, it's going to sweat down. But if we can control that within a 7 to 10 degree temperature, we won't get these issues. It's sad that we even have to spend time on this, Mr. Mayor, and I'm sorry for taking over this piece, but there are young kids in that building that really should be represented by this city. And all of us here, I'm sure, agree at the same thing. Replace the units, and let's get this done right the first time, and not waste good money over bad money, putting parts into things that are going to fail the next week, and we don't have the technicians to even fix them.
Counselor Yan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, but it's all well said and done, so thank you.
Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. I just want to say that this has been a frustrating issue, but I got to give the present administration a lot of credit. And not to knock the last people throughout the decade, but you've got a good team now. You've got Mr. Byrne, you've got Mr. St. Thea. We finally have a team that knows what they're doing. So we have to be patient, let them do their job. I see Mr. St. Thea working, you know, incredible hours, six, I see him at six in the morning, I see him at eight at night. So he needs a team, and he's assembling it, and he's going to get this done. It's very frustrating, but I have a lot of faith in him and the team that's, that your team, Mr. Manager, put together, and I know that we're going to see some differences here. I guess, and you probably already asked, if there's any more money left in the Esser accounts, that was something that I had pushed as mayor, trying to get more money from that Esser account to take care of some of this stuff, so maybe we can see what's left in that account to, a team effort to get this settled. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from any of the council member? Here none, on favors, I oppose, no, the ice covered, motions carry. We are, that completes the last motion of the evening. We are now going to the communications from City Manager. These are the motion responses. We'll start with the alphabet A. This is on self-harm. Any comments or questions, Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I just have one question, if possibly Ms. Golden couldn't answer it. Just, is there any requirement, I know they're outside nonprofits, but is there any requirement for them to track the return rates for the syringes? I mean, that's what most of this question was about, just because there's so many of them found all over the city. So we were trying to find out if there's any requirement for them to track the return rates.
So they do have requirements back to the DPH for what they give out, and then they track what they, what they bring back. So they do try to track one-for-one for what they get back, so they do try to get as many back that they give. So say someone comes and brings them back 21 syringes. The syringes are given out in a package of 10. So if you, if you bring in 21 syringes, they give out 30. So they do try to get back to the, to the number of 30. So they try to give out incentives like gift cards or things to bring back the same number of syringes. So they're trying to come up with things, but they don't make money, so it's very difficult to have people bring syringes because they only have a set number of clients, is what they call them. So they have a set number of clients that they have to bring them things, and...
So they try to incentivize them. That's, I just didn't know if there were any accountability measures in the grants that they had to meet, you know, as far as...
So, so they are, so that's how they get their money from year to year, is how much they have and how many clients they have. So Health Innovations has a van that they have, because they go to Chelsea, they go to Lynn, they go to Lowell, and they have quite a few other places. And that's how they can get the van more often to come to Lowell, so the amount of clients that they have and the more people that they see, they get the van more often. So that's how they do it.
Okay, thank you very much. You're welcome.
And none, the next motion response is on DEI goals. It's response to both Counselor Nure and Counselor Drinkwater. Any comments or question?
There is a registered speaker, Mr. Mayor.
Let's have the speaker go first. Mr. Clerk, please call the speaker to come up.
Tara Hong.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city councilor, city manager, everyone here at home. And my name is Tara Hong. As you know, I live at 22 Canton Street in Lowell, District 6. I just wanted to stand here before you today with great enthusiasm and pride as we reflect on incredible strive our city have made diversity, equity, and inclusion. The cooperation between our city manager and chief DEI officer have nothing short of remarkable so far, I think, and it's testament to our city commitment to fostering the commitment where everyone feel valued and included. In the short time since this position was founded, the chief DEI officer role, many initiatives have been undertaken showcasing our delegation to create more inclusive Lowell. Thank you to all of your work, of the great idea to help our community grow and come together. One thing I want to add to, is about the, one thing that I want to add is about the DEI Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Advisory Committee. I know that, forgive me if I'm wrong, that the council will vote tonight on the 7.2 ordinance amendment, amend Chapter 9 by creating Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Committee. I want to, I want the council to add a few things to this ordinance. Number one, the, in the article of, the article 12 of Chapter 9-43, Membership Appointment Term Qualification, I would like to ask the city to consider adding who should be on the committee, including community-based nonprofit like CTI, Lowell Vote, TBA, or CMAA, and minority group in Lowell to the committee. It will give the city and committee more knowledge on how we can work together as the city to help improve DEIB goals in City Hall and around the city. Number two, since this is a new thing in our community, in the ordinance of this article in Chapter 9-43.2, Power and Duty, the report back to the city manager, mayor, city council should also include the word "community" in there as well. In this way, it create, it create equity and transparency in the city. As a young person of color, I am thank you to the city of all the, thank you to the city and all the advocates in this city who helped make this happen. Since it, since it is happening right now, let's do it right. I am excited to see how it will benefit the community. When people feel respect, represented, and included, you will see our community grow. This might seem small and unimportant to some people in the community, but to have this role right now, and, and all the plan and goal to shaping the role, we create more representation and trust for the community and to the city government. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, any other speaker?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Who would like to go first? Counselor Nure and Counselor Drinkwater? Counselor Drinkwater, you've been volunteer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I always go back to you when you volunteer somebody else.
That's right, that's right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, appreciate it. Thank you for the report. I understand that Ms. Dominguez, it's new to the positions as chief DEI officers. A report indicated that she has, that some step being taken to address these issues in terms of DEI initiative. Maybe I could have have Ms. Dominguez come and speak to some of the initiative that has already been accomplished, and then I have some question regarding the report.
So the initiatives, the first one was the Human Rights Campaign score. Lowell scored 50, and we got the news a couple of weeks ago, we scored up to 91. Many of you have been asking why 91 and not 100? Unfortunately, we had sent material, but the deadline to review everything was over, so next year we'll have the 100. That's my goal. Since a couple of the ordinance that we have tonight was one of the reasons why we didn't get the 100. Time-wise, there's a lot of things that happened that we weren't able to have in the council agendas. So we're hoping that by next year, this is something that's going to be reviewed every year, so hopefully we'll maintain the 100 by next year.
Any other comments, questions, Counselor Nure?
I, I think that you also, we also have, Mr. Mayor, if Ms. Dominguez on her report, maybe on those point, I believe the six point that marked here, including recently working with MCC, with the department head, to really, partnership with the MCC to really learning DEI and DEI initiative.
Yes, we've been meeting, beginning with MCC Professor Eloysa Decuna and the Police Department to start opening the Lowell precincts. And with that, that will be with intern students from MCC to start working the precincts at nighttime. So we started those conversations. Hopefully, we're hoping to start that program in January 2024.
Okay, so let me just go through this report with Ms. Dominguez and maybe Mr. Managers as well. The report recommended that we create a two-new ordinance. One has to do with non-discriminations and equal opportunities ordinance. In there, as Speakers Tara Hong have mentioned, that I believe back in 2017, then Counselor Samaris, or maybe Mayor Samaris, 2017, creating a, what we call, let me just, the Citywide Diversity Council. In that Citywide Diversity Council is also indicated, in the city of Lowell, particularly in the Lowell Public School, we have more than 50 language speak in the school, and in the committee, they are talking about all other ethnic group being a member of this committee. And I know, I noticed that in the recommendations that Ms. Dominguez and maybe the administrations also proposes, has not include those ethnic group and/or the nonprofit that Tara Hong spoke about. I know that we have a 7.2 ordinance ask going to vote. I would ask that we amend that to include the ethnic group, at least two or three representative from ethnic group to be a part of this committee as well. So I also noticed that in the report also indicated that we are looking to work, we are looking to create a new employee handbook, and I'm looking forward to that and more from Ms. Dominguez. I know that she's new to the position. While we are doing it, while we waiting, while we're working on the new employee handbook, I urge that the cities, you know, one way to do as well is the, the language that we have been, you know, trying to do in terms of translation, to at least, right now, we do three language. So we work with our partners in terms of the using consistencies, in terms of individual to translate or organization to translate, because recently, as Mr. Managers learned that the plaque in the South Common was really posted many times out there in community, it was a bad taste. I see it, I like, you know, where is this? I mean, really insulting to some of us in the community. So it's simple translation, and yet it's really damaging, and it doesn't look good for us. Use consistent translators, qualified and professional translator to do so going forward. So that said, I'm looking forward to a new additional report from Ms. Dominguez in terms of the new employee handbook, as well as the composition of this, this non-discrimination, non-discriminations and equal opportunity ordinance, as well as another ordinance here as indicated, the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Advisory Committee. So please update this council once you have the committee together, as well as the, the new handbook on this. I deal, I give it to Mr. Counselor Drinkwater. Thank you.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you very much to Ms. Dominguez and to the administration for the report. And I think this is a very good report that updates on a lot of progress that's being made. And, and just to highlight a few things and pull out a few things that I find very encouraging. One, as we know, this administration has made training a priority through the partnership with Middlesex Community College, training for existing employees. But one thing I think that is really important is also, that's mentioned here, is the onboarding process, onboarding and exit interviews. And, and these are things that have been, you know, talked about being implemented for the, for the past couple of years, but I think it's really important that we begin with the hiring process to make sure that incoming employees understand the city's DEI goals, goals and initiatives. I think the ambassador program of having someone in each department that, that can serve as a, as a DEI ambassador to other employees in that department is a really important thing. So it's just, I'll summarize by saying, it's just great to see many of these, these things that kind of may have emerged from the audit that we had a couple of years ago, being put into practice, and it's just a very intentional report, going step by step, implementing things that are going to make this a more equitable city. So thank you very much for the progress, and thank you for the report.
Counselor Janes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through here to the City Manager, Ms. Dominguez, I just wanted to say thank you for this report, thank you for all your work on it, for taking this stuff seriously, and, you know, working towards these goals. As we know, this is just going to be a continual improvement situation. We're going to, you know, work on stuff, see what works, improve the things that don't, and just kind of keep, keep going at it. So with that said, if it's okay with the manager and Ms. Dominguez, I would appreciate it if we could get a quarterly update on, on what we've done in the quarter and what's to come in the next quarter, just so we can stay abreast of how this, these things are moving forward, because it is important to make sure it stays top of mind. But I appreciate all the work on it so far, and look forward to talking about this more in the future. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Counselor Kishia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. I want to thank Manager Golden, Ms. Dominguez, and the staff. We've made major gains over the last year, and... We've made major gains over the last year and 11 months for this council and for the city. When you start looking at some of the things that were created, liaisons between the police station, when you look at purchase orders and stuff like that, you just, when we first started, we had this Clifton-Lassen report that looked overwhelming to all of us when we first read through it, and then we started looking and saying, I think that the manager and his staff have chipped away when you looked at the DEI training and with the Middlesex and just trying to bring everything in-house. I would commend him and his staff. And Ms. Dominguez, you have big shoes to just keep moving with, so good luck in any test I ever went, and I got a 50, and then I got a 91 the next time. I was eating ice cream, I didn't really care about anything else, I was looking for 100. Congratulations.
I am.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, great job, Ms. Dominguez, and let's go for that 100.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Next year.
The next motion response is on funding cooling, funding the cooling-warming. Mr. Clerk, we have a, would you speak on this one?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Stephen Malagodi.
Good evening, everybody. Steve Malagodi, 200 Market Street, number 216 in beautiful downtown Lowell, representing 350 Mass. of Gregory Lowell tonight. We want to thank the originator of this motion and the manager's response to this important issue. We know that the primary focus of this motion was one of concern for protecting the unhoused as we get into the winter season, and of course, we support any and all such efforts. But we just want to point out that while shelter from the cold is vitally important, it is extreme heat which kills more people than all other climate and weather-related issues combined. It's particularly deadly for the elderly and others with health and mobility issues. Poor communities are impacted far more than wealthier ones. In Lowell in 2005, the average number of days over 90 degrees was six. By mid-century, it's projected to be 24. Those numbers are from the city of Lowell's 2020 Hazard Mitigation and Preparedness Plan, and I'm sure those figures are very conservative. The Union of Concerned Scientists says that that number, for the Boston area at least, is 41. All we're saying is that this issue is going to have to be dealt with sooner or later, and sooner is always better and cheaper than later, and that real long-term solutions, providing for a much wider segment of the population than just the unhoused, should be in the planning stages now. Perhaps when viewed through a wider perspective of climate change, funding opportunities such as from within the Inflation Reduction Act, designed to fund climate resiliency projects, there, I mean, I don't know, chasing grants is not in my skill set, trust me on that. But there are others on staff who have those skills, like those in the Sustainability Division. Maybe if there was a department, there could be a more comprehensive view, just saying. Thank you very much.
Mr. Clerk, any other speaker?
No, Mr. Mayor.
I don't see the names, I don't see the, you would have to get a motion by one of the counselors, Counselor Gishia. Motion by Counselor Gishia to suspend the rule and to allow a person to speak that's not registered, second by Counselor Mercier. Please approach the podium and state your name, your address.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I submitted, I'm Brooke Frigetta, I live at 35 Bernier, apartment 13, even though it's listed as currently closed as Delmont with the wrong letters online. Anyways, what are we doing? And I'm sorry for those of you who have no idea what I'm talking about, and those of you who do, know exactly what I'm talking about. Since September, I have tried reaching out to Kim Scott in regards to many issues of public safety.
Speaker, please, I would ask you kindly refrain from mentioning the member of the council's name directly, or any individual's name directly.
Okay, I apologize. I reached out to my neighborhood's city councilor directly, joined the Facebook group, to which I was later kicked out of, of South Lowell Facebook group, because it's about politics, not safety. Again, I think it's really telling that I wasn't able to speak today. The power lines in South Lowell, the condition of them, as well as the response to the city's cyber attack, much less my own personal one, have been absent. Last night, I called 911. I waited outside for two hours, because I called 911 directly from my phone. It was cyber-corrupted, so I called the Fire Safety Prevention Office, to which Patrick, or Patrick, I can't remember the gentleman's name, it's on my Truth Social. So everything that I am discussing today, I would like anything that is on my Truth Social or Twitter, my Truth Social is truth.com, truthsocial.com slash at B Frigetta. Now, the reason I say that is because it's been so difficult to actually get a response to the videos, I wanted to make sure that if, in the case there is a massive fire in our city, I will have been able to have put the proof. I'm not sure what work National Grid is doing, but I think this, along with a lot of other reports, are required. And I believe, and I hope that as I'm saying this, National Grid and/or the Fire Department of South Lowell, because today I walked from South Lowell all the way to Tingsborough. Drake, and I got picked up. I'll be done in one minute.
Mr. Mayor, could?
Counselor Rook?
Yeah, quickly, I know we're still supposedly talking about one of the motion responses, it sounds like the speaker has different concerns, could you just refer her to the manager's office?
We had, I thank you for comment, we had a suspension of the rule for her to speak.
And I think it's rather telling.
Since we have that already, give them the timeframe to the speaker.
I'll speak in one more minute.
One more minute, if you could just state the nature of your request, because I don't want you to run out of time and not get your request across to the council here. So one minute, could you state the nature of your request here?
Yeah, I'll end with, for those of you who do a great job representing the city, and for those of you who care about our city and the future of it, you are loved and adored, and I can't imagine what you've been through in the past couple of years. And something needs to be done, and honestly, people may need to be evacuated from that neighborhood, I don't know what it's going to take, but I also don't know what it's going to take to get a response from a police officer and/or a fire official. Also, the drones need to stop. This is America. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, your statement have been noted, and we'll have a member, through Mr. Manager, you can have a member of your office reach out to the speaker tomorrow. Thank you. We now go back to where we left off on the agenda, these are the motion response. We left off at, I believe, at the alphabet D, is that correct, Mr. Clerk? On crosswalk? On crosswalk. Actually, we did not complete the funding for the cooling-warm, any comment on this one?
Yes, I have, thank you, I do have a comment on the cooling-warming. I appreciate the response, but to me, there wasn't a recommendation here as to what we should do going forward. There was talk of potential funding sources, but that was about it. So I guess, to the manager, how do we get a recommendation as to whether or not this is something we can do, particularly going into this winter season, it's, you know, there's a lot of unsheltered individuals, if we can keep them from freezing to death outside, I think that would be a good use of funding. But from a longer-term perspective, as Mr. Malagodi talked about, cooling in the summer is important as well. So I'm just curious where we are in terms of actually being able to implement something like this, and how we should move on that. I'm happy to refer back if that's the easiest way, direct it to a subcommittee, what's the, I guess, recommendation from the manager?
Mr. Manager, you want to go first? Counselor Lehe?
Just quickly too, this came up today with the co-drive and if, you know, as a suggestion, if they don't fill all the rooms over at the Innen Conference Center, now that they're going to use that for what it looks like for migrant families, this could be an opportunity to house some of our unhoused, you know, the young students, young families that are unhoused. So this could be an opportunity for vacancy, for rooms that are open over at the ICC, so we should check into that too. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Counselor, we can absolutely send it to the subcommittee, but we do, we always have warming centers and cooling centers available, no matter what, throughout the year if needed. We had a meeting today, talking specifically about the unhoused, we had a meeting today with the Housing Subcommittee to have these discussions. Some of the concerns that have been, that were raised today, that we've been talking about over the past month plus, leading up to the winter, has been with the lack of hotel spaces that we may have. So in working with CTI, CTI has been working to try to get the hotel back up and running. With the number of people that we have, that we know of, with what we have over at LTLC, Little Transitional Living Center, or the shelter, either or, and the number of other hotel spaces, currently right now, we're still running at a deficit. But what this is saying, I guess, is that the chief is looking for other ways to get money, but we are spending ARPA money currently right now, whenever we have to, in regards to warming and cooling centers. The warming centers, not even from recollection, but we spend a lot of time there, whether they be warming or cooling centers, the warming centers seem to be a little bit more popular with people coming in to warm up and then leaving. The cooling centers, however, even on those three, four-day hits that we've had, that it's been 90-plus, they're not as popular at all. Usually, we have one or two people, and that's pretty, pretty standard. So we need to probably get more information out there, but as everybody knows, we've been struggling with how to get information out to folks, whether it be, you know, someone's not on Facebook, or X, or, you know, Instagram, and so many other things. But I think what the chief of the Fire Department is looking to do is to see where else we can get money. But currently, right now, I feel as though the city is providing all of this, but we can always do it better, so if there's something that you want to send it back to Subcommittee, or have this discussion, or I can take it back, we're always looking to try to get something like this better, and quite frankly, something that's easier to get to. It's just that we don't have a lot of municipal buildings that would be utilized, such as the senior center. I wouldn't want you to think we're not doing this, we have every plan to do this, and we are looking at the numbers just today about what we need to do, how CTI can be helpful, how LTLC can be helpful. We went through the whole piece with Middlesex Street, with Westford Street, with Andover Street, so on and so forth, when they're all opening, and to increase the permanent housing situation for our homeless population, as well as our shelter, to better our shelter condition. So all of this, I know it's a, I know your concern, Counselor, I think I hear your concern, but we will be opening this, and we are working this angle. I just think the chief is looking for other opportunities to get money into the city. I hope that answers what you were looking for, sir.
Yes, thank you. I think after this discussion, the one thing I'd ask for at this point then is, could we get just a report back as to what the rubrics are when we decide to opening a warming or cooling shelter, whether it's temperature, or snow, or whatever, just to understand what those triggers are, and then just what the capacity availability is. Are we just using the senior center right now when we do this? I suppose is the question.
Mr. Manager?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Typically, it's windshield in the winter. Once again, in the summer, even when it's beyond the 92 for three days, or even four days, which we didn't really see too much of that this year, but those cooling centers just don't seem to be utilized.
Sure.
Now, if there was a problem in one of our major buildings, where our seniors might have an issue, you know, I would expect that we would get full. But in the, in the winter, from recollection, I can give you something, you know, it may say when it's 20 degrees, but if it's just 20 degrees, that's not a big, well, I think it's a big deal, but there's a lot of people that don't. It's the windshield that really seems to be driving some of our homeless population to come in and seek shelter. We've seen a big push when the winds are really whipping, and quite frankly, CTI, we have this discussion with our emergency folks, LPD, as well as all of our homeless coordinators, to ensure that when it is unsafe to be outside, and usually those warnings go off well before, when it's unsafe to go outside, we make sure that we go into any type of the encampments to let people know that we really need them to come in for their own safety. We had that, once again, that discussion today, it happened a few times last winter, and quite frankly, Ms. Golden, who just left a few moments ago, talked about how there were some folks that had come in that we had never, ever seen before. And I, to answer your question, I think it's really the windshield piece that will drive people into any type of warming shelter.
Sure. I appreciate that, and I just think it would be helpful for us to have it, because we do get questions from folks all the time, like, what are the options? And so if we have something that says, okay, we know that when it's going to be cold, whatever that means, this is your option. So if we could just get that kind of report back, I think that would be helpful for all of us. Thank you.
Counselor Newell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to thanks Chief, Fire Chief Sharon for the report. I know that this report, Mr. Managers, is in response to City Council, and it's for City Councilors. My question is that, has this report been shared with the Housing Committee that you and your staff met with in term of, you know, the, what's happening here, are they aware of it? And also, the other question I have is that, as Counselor Lehe touched on a little bit, is that, you know, giving that, you know, giving that the ICC soon to house the migrant, want to know if you can communicate or have conversation with the Housing Subcommittee to explore, meaning the Homeless Subcommittee, not the City Council, explore the possibilities of using ICC to shelter the unhoused, because what I just heard a moment ago from you was a difficulty of finding hotel or motel to house the unhoused. So this may be an exploration, looking at ICC for that as well.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Counselor, we did ask for that consideration, I'm still waiting for an answer back. One of the concerns that they had was mixing individual homelessness with family homelessness. At the ICC currently right now, we have not been contacted, I don't think that's a, you know, everyone knows that, as soon as I'm contacted by the state, we will let you know ASAP. But one of the concerns, one of the pushbacks, was mixing homeless individuals with homeless families. But I'd asked them to consider that because of, you know, the number of homeless families, excuse me, homeless individuals that we have here in the city. But not to be deterred, we took that in that meeting today with all the professionals that you know, you know all the names of the folks that are there, to find out where we believe we are in the number of homeless individuals that we have, and where are we deficient in the beds. So we have found out that we are still somewhat deficient. We have some plans, but we are still looking and hoping that CTI is in contact with the Commonwealth of Mass. to find out if they can, they can indeed keep their winter protocol for the hotel. What does that mean? It means that they could possibly double what they have there now, what they've done in the past. There's a long story about the Fire Department, and so on and so forth, but all of these conversations are happening, and as soon as the Lieutenant Governor's team gets back to the administration, we'll let the council know what, you know, what the next step is for the Innen Conference Center. There are still many discussions, and I can only say that there are rumors right now about when the Innen Conference Center is opening, and who will be running it, because we haven't, we haven't had that official notification at this time.
Yes, Counselor Newell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments or questions on this motion response? Hearing none, the next motion response, the alphabet D, on crosswalk painting, any comment or question, Counselor Gishia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Through you to Manager Golden, did we get a three-year bid for contract for crosswalk painting?
Mr. Manager?
All of our contracts, thank you, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Counselor, all of our contracts are actually going out, hopefully this week. A couple I know on the paving side have gone out, and then as far as sidewalks, that's what the intent is, to go for three years. I'm not so sure that the sidewalks are out, I would, I'll be checking with the engineer right now, and I probably could have an answer for you before the end of this meeting.
Could we make sure that as we look at the crosswalk painting, that we make sure that it would be painted in the springtime, and just put an end date so it all gets done in the springtime? Because I think that now that it's painted, the plows are just going to do it. Because I think that now that it's painted, the plows are just going to do what they did to UMass Lowell when they painted last year, at this time, just a little bit before this time of year. The blue was wiped off by the time March, April came around, and it had to be redone anyway. So, I just would ask that we would do our most of it, if we can, during the springtime, between maybe April and June.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Counselor, we are looking to change some things in there, and that three-year contract is one of them, and obviously getting them out before the end of November, which is our goal. Where in years past, we've sometimes been into the beginning of the new year, which obviously isn't efficient when you're trying to get into the scheduling side. But hopefully, we'll have that answer that it went out, and I'll let the council know if that's okay before the end of the meeting.
Thank you.
Counselor Yam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I may piggyback on that, the Thondike improvement, the painting that they use is really thick, and I'm just wondering why the painting is so good, and then the one that the city have a subcontractor do is not as good as the Thondikes exchange. So, that's my first, and I have two more. But the second one, I just want to thank you. I got the word "stop" painted one night, and I went out, and I was excited. It's a corner of Fletcher's and Bower Street, and I'm sure the church, the St. George Greek Orthodox, who came to speak, they are really thrilled to see that. It helped reduce the, reduce the people that missed the, missed the stop by having the words printed on the, on the, on the street. My third one is a bit off, but it has to do with sidewalk. In light of an accident in Andover, where a young child on the scooter, on a bike, was run over by, run over by a truck, which is tall, cannot see. What causing that is that the stop sign was not, is right there by the sidewalk. But now, due to this incident, unfortunate incident, now the town of Andover reexam how to install the stop sign compared to the sidewalk. If you go to Wilder Street, and, 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 one of the streets, that there's a lot of stop signs. If you go, you see that the stop sign either way, right on the sidewalk, or after the sidewalk. So, if you go, you can drive, and you see that. So, hearing the report about the unfortunate incident of young child ran over because of the stop sign was right on the sidewalk, make me think that we should examine this, where we put the stop sign in relation to the crosswalk. So, if we put back the stop sign far enough, the young child on a bike might be able to see by a driver of a big trucks, you know, because she's so small, and he couldn't see it. The stop sign is right by the crosswalk where the young child was on a bike. So, if we could do that, reexamine. I know it's not part of the motion response, but being of that, and I just want to kind of, for us to reexamine how we install the stop sign in relation to the crosswalk. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. If I could take them three, two, and one. Counselor, the stop sign placement, I can have our transportation engineer examine it and find out where exactly they should be. Our transportation engineer has been very, very good at making sure that, you know, the rules are the rules in regards to where she, where things are placed. So, I can make sure that, that particular piece happens. I'm happy in item number two, the stop being written on the road. I know that you were pushing that. And on item number one, we are, it's thermal plaster that is being used, which is a more durable paint. And that is something that we are also looking to move from just standard paint products to a thermal plaster. And I'm going to, I'm going to go out on a limb here, and I think it was Boylston Street, I hope so. After we micro-surface, we're using thermal plaster there as well. So, it's a heavier, heavier piece that could, you know, minimum, I think, I believe, is like three years, where paint can be ripped up or just dragged off. So, the thermal plaster is something that we, from the administration side, is looking to see if we can go further with our paintings, and that is something that we're going to be looking forward into January of 2024, and to some, not all, will be doing painting and thermal plaster. So, that's the answer for the Thondike, the reason that Thondike looks so good.
Thank you so much.
No other comments on this motion response? The last motion response of the evening is on 32 Union Street, respond to a joint motion by Counselor Janess and Counselor Gitchia. Who would like to go first? Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate the response, appreciate knowing that this is moving towards sale. This came up again at the Back Central Meeting last week. Myself, Counselor Gitchia, Counselor Scott, we're all there. It is a concern for the neighborhood with the current state of it. So, I'm just curious, you know, what we're looking at for a timeline to complete the sale, and then possibly have any development start, and just curious what we're doing as a city to really take care and maintain this property as we go between now and the sale.
Through Mr. Manager to the DPD Director?
Thank you. We actually, this council will be seeing a recommendation for, we had a couple respondents to an RFP, and we hope to bring the vote with a recommendation for selling that property to the next council meeting for December 5th. In the meantime, I've had conversations with Mr. Saints here, and we'll follow up with him again, about just maintaining it, doing some minimum maintenance on it prior to the city closing on it. You know, just because we're going to make the vote recommendation, we'll still have to go through the process, so we'll maintain ownership for a little while after that, so we can work closely with DPW to make sure it's cleaned up. But we're moving very quickly on the sale, and hope to have something on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay, great, thank you. I don't know if it's possible to include this in terms of the sale or not, but could we ask whomever purchases the property to make sure that it is maintained and secured until they begin construction on their, on their project? You know, if we can get it in a good state, when the city still controls it, and hand it over and say, please purchaser, maintain this level of maintenance on this project, on this property until you begin your project, and then, you know, do what you got to do.
Yeah, absolutely. I think the party that we're going to recommend a sale to is a good community member, and somebody that I think would be very receptive to that, and also, one of the conditions of the RFP process is telling us how quickly you're going to be able to move towards construction. So, we anticipate that this won't be something that's going to sit around as a vacant property for a while after we go through with the sale.
Okay, this is all great news. Thank you.
No other comments or questions that complete the motion responses? The last informational report from the manager is on the HRC report. Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Counselors, I'm very, we've already had an opportunity to talk to Ms. Dominguez in regards to this. I think this is a very exciting time. I know we've already talked about this, but just to really talk about, I believe the council had brought up the fact going from 50 to 91. This has been around, this particular piece, Municipal Equality Index, has been around for 12 years, and within the past year-plus, I'm very happy to announce, which you've already know, that we're up to that 91 number, and that is really driven by the administration and the council working together, as well as bringing all of our partners together. So, I know we already discussed this, but the fact that the HRC has gone up 41 points, it's a proud, proud day. And I do want to say to Ms. Dominguez, and also Ms. DeRoges, and the entire staff up here, they really did a fabulous job in crossing Ts, dotting Is, and we have still yet nine more points to go. And then, then there's a difficulty of keeping that 100. This is something that we've taken very serious from day one. The council has taken it very serious. We will continue down this road, and to the council's point of bringing this up on a quarterly basis, or every four months, whatever the case may be, that's something that we're probably going to have a discussion in the beginning of January with a whole host of things, whether it be on energy, or, or things like HRC, that we want to bring back additional informational pieces for the council to know where we're going and set those benchmarks, and if we need to change something because it's not working, or it's just not something that we think we want to go in a different direction as a team, this is going to give us, I think, that opportunity. But this is truthfully a great day, and I'm very happy to announce this, which was discussed earlier today.
Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the manager and your team, Annabelle, and everyone else who's worked on this. I just want to say thank you. The jump from 50 to 91 is fantastic. I was very happy to see that, and I'm even happier to see that we're taking steps to push that even further, to get to that 100 score that we'd all like to see. And we knew it wasn't going to happen overnight, and in one year. This is another one of those things, that it just needs to be a culture of continual improvement, and review, and iteration. And so, I appreciate all the work that's gone into it, and all the work that is still happening on it. I have heard from some of the members of the community who brought this to my attention last year, when I filed the motion, and they're happy to see this score coming up, and they're happy to see, you know, the city's processes and procedures in this score reflecting a more welcoming, more inclusive city that we all want to build. So, I think this is a, this is a great improvement. Thank you again, and I, you know, look forward to next year and getting those last nine points, and then, like you said, it's going to be work to keep it. And, you know, it's, it's work on the, on the part of many, many people in the administration to make this happen and make this stay. And so, thank you to everyone who's had a hand in it.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Need a motion to accept all the communications through manager by Counselor Mercier, second by Counselor Scott. Replace on file, on favor of the eye, opposing note, eyes have it, motion is carry. The next item is 5.3. This is on the appointment of John Munni Hoot to the Cultural Council. Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Counselors, I'm very happy to bring Mr. Hoot forward to join the Cultural Council. The gentleman is a very well-known Low Cultural Council by our own case, and excited, he is excited to serve.
If there are no questions or answers, need a motion to accept place on file by Counselor Yam, second by Counselor Nguyen, on favor of the eye, opposing note, eyes have it, motion is carry. The next item is six, these are votes from the city manager. 6.1 is a vote accept expand 200,000 safe streets for all grant. Waifu reading, second reading by title. And the city council vote authorizing the city manager to accept appropriate and expand funds from the United States Department of Transportation, USDOT, in the amount of $200,000 from the safe streets for all. As as for a supplemental action planning grant, any comments or questions by the member? Motion by Counselor Nguyen, second by Counselor Gitchia. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Gitchia?
Yes.
Counselor Janess?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mercier?
Yes.
Counselor Nguyen?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rock?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Yam?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Tenyes?
The next two items are the ordinances from city manager, 7.1, ordinance amend chapter 56 by adding article 6. If there are no comments or questions, need a motion to report to public hearing on December 5th, 2023, 7:00 PM by Counselor Rock, second by Counselor Scott, on favor of the eye, opposing note, eyes have it, motion is carry. The next ordinance is 7.2, amend chapter 9 by creating diversity, equity, inclusion, and belong committee. Mr. Clerk, do we have a speak on this item?
Yes, we do. Yanjue Choi.
Good evening. My name is Yanjue Choi, and I'm the Executive Director of Coalition for Better Acre. And today, I'm here to speak on the establishment of DEIB Advisory Committee. First, I would like to applaud the city for creating this advisory committee, and a lot of, a lot of the suggestions were already made that I was going to talk about by Tara Hong and Counselor Nguyen, so I'm going to skip a lot of it, but I do actually have some suggestions on the composition of the membership. I would like for the city council to really consider other individuals, such as people that, that have expertise in DEI work. So, a lot of organizations have DEI practitioners on their staff. I know Enterprise Bank has several people that actually work on DEI work. MCC has one, the school committee actually has the Chief Equity Officer, CTI, Boys and Girls Club. CBA is a small organization, so we don't have DEI officer, but a lot of organizations do. So, they would be, I think, very helpful being on part of this kind of committee. And it was mentioned before, but I do absolutely think that ethnic diversity is important, so having some kind of, some kind of wording on having a BIPOC community member in the, in the membership would be important. Also, people with HR expertise, and maybe someone with a language barrier. CBA actually has people who only speak Spanish on our board, and we actually translate everything we do, which also makes us really think about all the people that we serve, so that's something, I think, you can consider. And in my opinion, the first six seats that were listed were just checking business-as-usual boxes, and I think this is a really important committee, and I think city needs to think beyond usual suspects that always sit on these boards, and really think about the diverse people who can provide input to the city. And the other piece that I want to talk a little bit about is, sometimes when you have board that actually has imbalance in power, people in a position of power, sometimes people, community members, actually don't always want to speak up or bring up their ideas. So, as you think about this committee, I think you need to really think about the composition and the power structure. And lastly, I do want to mention, you should also think about frequency of the meetings. The ordinance doesn't indicate that, as it was talked about earlier, Diversity Council that was formed in 2017, never met. And I know there's Citizens Advisory Committee from police that hasn't met in few years because they don't have members. So, you don't want a committee that you have just to check boxes to get good grades on these Equity Index, but you want meaningful committee that's going to make the city better place. So, I hope you can consider some of these items as you think about amending. Thank you.
Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As been mentioned by a couple speakers tonight, Section 9-43(c) deals with the makeup of this, this proposed makeup of this committee. And it's basically four city employees, a representative from the community college and the university, a high school, college student, a member of the LGBTQ-plus community, a resident with disabilities, and then two associate members appointed by the city manager. My one concern is this, with this, is it seems like it's painting some pretty tight boxes, and it might be difficult to really have the level of diversity on this board that we're looking for to actually move things forward. So, I would just ask that the administration kind of take a look at what other cities and towns do in terms of this structure, if this is reflective of best practices, or if we should look at changing this up a little bit. The speaker and, or both speakers who've spoke on this tonight have talked about the lack of specifically calling out a minority resident in this list of members, and I think that's important. I think if we can add, make sure we have representation from various minority groups around the city, that'd be a good thing. I know you probably don't want to make this too big, because then the board gets unwieldy, and it's tough to, tough to really be effective with a, with a board that's too large. But I do think where this is a DEI board, we should look to make sure we're including those various DEI goals within the makeup of this board. So, that's, those are my thoughts on this. Thank you.
Counselor Gitchia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. I would agree with Counselor Janess in the fact that when you look under 9-43, and then you look at C, there's 11 members of that board, and two of them associate members appointed by the manager. Do we really need the executive assistant?
Do we really need the executive assistant to the manager and the representative from the law department? Because what that does is it gives a majority of city and state employees that oversee this board. So it's not really a fair representation on the backside because six are either city or state employees. So if they remove the executive assistant, city manager, and the representative from the law department, the law department can be in the room and not be a voting member. I, I think it makes more sense to cut it down to nine, and if the manager wanted to or the manager at the time wanted to appoint both of those to the committee, they could because he has two associate members appointed by the manager. So I think that that would be fair if we can just take that recommendation.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Councilors, we modeled this after Worcester, and what we can do is we can take it back, actually, to make some of those changes and bring it back. So that would be, if that's okay with the, with the body.
So okay with, so probably need a motion just instead of referring to public hearing, refer back to law department? Mr. Managers, a motion by Council Leahy, second by Council Janess, on favor of the eye, post a note, eyes have it, motion is carry. Council Leahy?
Thank you. I just wanna note too that appreciate the work that went into this, appreciate the speakers that came down to talk on this and the comments from my colleagues, because it's really hard to get people to volunteer for boards today. So I applaud the effort, and hopefully these changes will inspire some more people to serve. But it's really difficult. So to come up with this and do the work on it, I appreciate the, the effort. Thank you.
Council Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that this was modeled on, on Worcester. I think it was a good place to start. I would just recommend maybe we reach out to Worcester and see what their experience has been and if they have any lessons learned from this that we might be able to incorporate before we have to learn the same lessons. Thank you.
No other comments on that? The next item is the, is to report a special events subcommittee. There's no report today. The clerk will put, table it and put on the following meetings. The next item is the petition, 9.1, claim property damage. If there are no comments or question, need a motion to refer to law department for report and recommendation by Council Rourke, second by Council Scott, on favor of the eye, post a note, eyes have it, motion is carry. Any announcement? Council Mercy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I announced it last meeting, but it's getting closer, so I'd like to announce it again. On December 15th, the Lowell Senior Center is holding a Christmas dinner dance, and we're having a massive raffle. We've already got total prizes for the raffle of $1,600, more or less. There's so many prizes. People are still welcome to bring in raffled items until December 1st. But we are taking raffle tickets, if anybody's interested, right up until the day of the drawing, which is on the dinner dance, December 15th. All the proceeds go to the Friends of the Council on Aging, which the money is used to support the senior center and, and anything that is needed, like cameras, kitchen appliances, or whatever. We, we try to make it nice there for our seniors. So thank you for letting me say that. Thank you.
Council Gitchia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Tomorrow, Greater Lowell Technical High School will be holding a football game against Lowell Catholic, and it will be the opening of their new athletic complex at 5:30.
Mr. Manager?
Sorry, councilors. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have just a few just to remind everybody. November 25th, this Saturday, we have the City of Lights Parade. Really, it's from 11:00 AM on, so please, if you have that opportunity to look at cityoflights.org. There are a lot of, lots that's going on. And then from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM, I'd like to say to the councilors, here's one of the ideas that was brought forward by, by bringing Palmer and Middle alive, if you would. From 6:00 to 9:00, we're gonna have the Down Home Holiday Concert. There's gonna be three different bands playing from 6:00 to 9:00 o'clock. So if everybody could put that on your calendars, it might, it's gonna be a good time. Also, December 7th, we will be having an event over at the Lowell Memorial Auditorium. And from that particular event, I'm gonna have, whoop, I'm not going to, okay? We have 12 restaurants that are going to be providing free food while it lasts, as well as a DJ and the band Booty Vortex, who's a 70's disco funk band. And what this is for, this is, I know, this is for all Lowell residents, all Lowell employees, all of our partners, and it's a great opportunity to kick off a celebration and enjoy all the foods throughout the, I'm, I'm saying throughout the world, right? But all the restaurants coming right here from the city of Lowell. So just be on the lookout. We'll be sending things out on both of those. Obviously, the first one being the City of Lights Parade and the kick, the kickoff from Palmer and Middle Street from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM after that. The other piece that the council will see more of tomorrow, the Rourke Bridge. On December 9th, there's gonna be work starting at the Rourke Bridge at, in the evening. I'll make sure that all the councilors have that written up, and we will be putting out mobile boards, and the bridge at times will be closed in both directions. So there's more to come on that. I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew about that. But those are the, probably the three major pieces we have going on. I just wanna say thank you all very, very much for allowing me to do that, and I wish everyone a, a happy Thanksgiving for you and all of your families. Thank you.
Does the DPD Director have something else to add?
Yes, just one small thing. Earlier today, we had a ribbon cutting for the new pop-up retail location on Merrimack Street located at 51 Market, Market Street, not Merrimack, I'm sorry, 51 Market Street. It's a pop-up location that's located next to Brewed Awakenings and the former location occupied by Rebound. It is fantastic. They are open for business, and you should check it out to do some Christmas shopping. The hours of operation, they're gonna be closed on Mondays, open 10 to 6:00 PM Tuesday through Saturday, and open 10 to 5:00 PM on Sundays. So it's a great opportunity to support some local businesses. The two that are in the location will be there for roughly four months before there'll be a, a rotation of some new retailers. So please take the opportunity to check it out. It's, it's a great addition to downtown Lowell.
Council Yum?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This year, I'm very thankful for my fellow councilors and my first, the first responder, the city manager, Tom Golden and his team, our hardworking city employees, above all the Lowell residents. As we sit down and enjoyed our Thanksgiving dinner with family and friends, let us remember and pray for those who may not have food, who do not have family, and who have no homes for these holidays. Have a wonderful and safe Thanksgiving, everybody in the council chamber and at home as well. Thank you.
Council Leahy, did you have your hands up?
No.
I think Council Yum speak for all of us. On behalf of the entire city council, I wish everyone a happy and blessed Thanksgiving. Need a motion to adjourn by Council Scott, second by Council Mercy, on favor of the eye, post a note, eyes have it, motion is carry. Have a great night.